Well, go ahead and get started. As I said, I'm Greg Jane. I'm the editorial page editor here at the Columbia. I've been at it for long, so I'm still finding my way. So bear with me. I will be moderating the meeting. Thank you both for coming, first of all. Thank you for taking your time out. The other board members are free to ask questions and are encouraged to do so. Unfortunately, we're missing Jovi Campbell, another board member today. I'm guessing, I've never met with school board candidates before, so I'm guessing it will be 30 to 45 minutes. But if we have a good discussion going, it could go on. So, let's see. We will try to limit answers to two minutes or so. I'm still kind of learning how to do that and keep people in line. But I think we'll all be better off if we try and stay on topic and get to the point. Reporter Susan Parrish will be sitting and she'll be taking notes for possible background for future stories. And we are videotaping this for use on our website. So, I think we'll go ahead and get started. First of all, I would, we'll start with Lisa. In general terms, without getting too specific, what things are Vancouver Public Schools doing well right now? And where's there room for improvement?
Well, the main, the main area that I see for improvement is trying to get more kids graduating. We need to bring up the, it's not that we need to raise the bar for all of them, but we need to bring up the bottom. Because right now, less than 75% of kids are graduating. And we need to make sure that our focus is on having as many productive members of society as we can. And a lot, a big element of that is graduating from high school. It's especially in the southern schools. I call them southern schools because I came from the south. And so I know the contrast between the southern schools and the northern schools. And I'm seeing that contrast with southern schools and the northern schools in Vancouver. You can't really count BSAA. It's a sum of the world. The things we're doing well is all the programs for the gifted and more able students. We seem to be doing very well in those categories. And, I don't know if there's anything else.
And Kathy, same question to you.
So, I'll start with the areas that we are doing well. I would agree with Lisa that we have, the graduation rate that we have is a vast improvement over where we were. We're up about 10 points over the last four years. But still, 75 out of 100 is less than what we aspire to. I'd say another area that I think we could improve on, I was gonna say doing well. Graduation rates for improving have work to do. Our programs of choice have expanded. Over the last four years, we've added ITech Preparatory and we reimagined Lewis &amp; Clark's High School into a blended learning model. I think that's a real plus for us. And just overall, our programs of choice in magnet schools are, I think, a very large strength. Kids in Vancouver Public Schools have a tremendous number of options between language immersion, medical magnet, art school, now our STEM schools. We provide a lot of opportunities. I think another big strength of the district is our strategic planning. Four years ago, five years ago, we undertook Design II with six strategic initiatives. And we've made a tremendous amount of progress in each one of those. All the work that the district does, all the budgeting that we do, derives from our, our basic foundation, which is the strategic plan and the six initiatives. So everything we do is aligned to that. And we've seen great progress. And we're embarking on Design II, Chapter II, which is the next, would be the next three years of strategic planning. So, another area of strength, I think, for us is our budget. We are recognized across the state for having a lot of fiscal accountability. The state auditor finds us to be exceptional. We haven't had a finding or any kind of area of concern for seven years. We have grown our ending fund balance over the years. We've established our nutrition services area as a profit center now. And over the past few years, we've had a workforce stabilization fund, which has meant that when federal spending or state spending goes up and down, we can maintain our teacher FTE. In other words, we can maintain services to students because we have this stabilization fund. Some of the areas that I think we need to work on are parent engagement. I think that we could reach out better to parents and have more critical comments from them that I think would make us better. We definitely have gaps in the district that we're working hard to address, but we do have schools that have serious needs. Fort Vancouver High School, which has, you know, a lower graduation rate, has more than 80% pre-reduced lunch. So we have a lot of challenges there. We need to pour more resources into those areas.
Along those lines, how does the board work with, because in the district, as you find many places, there are schools that are vastly different as far as their socioeconomic demographics. How does the board work with them?
Well, Vancouver is very, I think, special and unique in that we recognize that we have, I guess essentially, there are geographical differences, which also encompass, we have geography where the socioeconomic blend in that area is severely depressed. And then we have schools in that area. So, the way the district has dealt with it since, I think, for the last three or four years was we created what was called the opportunity zone. And that was a recognition of, look, we have schools who are struggling. They need more assets. They need more resources. They need more attention. They need more of everything. And we have other schools that, based on how they're doing, honestly need less. They can get by with less. So, the idea was proposed. The schools from the north end agreed, the principals agreed, the staffs agreed and said, let's take resources from here that we can do without to invest in the other classrooms in our, in our schoolhouse. Because I think the board tries to think of the district as one schoolhouse with 33 classrooms. And if you think about it that way, it's, it's not taking away from one school to give to another school. It's simply distributing the resources based on the actual need, not, not just saying, we all get $25, whether or not we need $25. So, that investment of funds into the opportunity zone has paid huge dividends. We're seeing lots of increased partnerships with our community. We're seeing a lot of learning gains for the students. And I think that people agree that reallocating the resources based on need was, it was just a really generous thing to do. And it was a necessary thing to do. And it shows the best side of Vancouver Public Schools, which is directing the resources where they're needed.
Lisa, why are you running for this position? And why now at this time?
Well, in the past four years, I have had quite a drastic change in my life. I have multiple sclerosis and I got on a breakthrough medicine that is open doors for many other medicines that affect the immune system. And was able to get those symptoms under control. I lost 85 pounds. I went back to school to finish my, or to get another degree in accounting. Got my CPA certification and got an MBA over the past five years. And in the past two years, I became very motivated to try and stand up for the things that make this country great. And I think that this is an opportunity to help bring those kinds, keep those kinds of ideas on the school board. There's some issues coming down the pipe with the Common Core. If you're not familiar with the debate on that, it's quite vivid. And there are just, I, I want to help the students. I want to make sure that the focus stays on there. And it's good, I was not aware of all these programs. It's good that they are doing those things. I know that in my, where I graduated from high school, I went to Rarrie Lee, which they only call Lee now. But they had magnet schools after I left. And a lot of the teachers there complained because the magnet schools took the best and the brightest out of the regular classrooms. And therefore, the regular classrooms, the teaching level had to go down because you didn't have the top of the bell curve in the classes anymore. And I think in offering different opportunities for students, we have to make sure that we keep these spread out so that there are smart kids at all the schools. And I think another thing to stress with, and I shouldn't even say smart kids because really, kids can think of them that, oh, I'm not the smart kid. Oh, I can't do it. But really, you don't have to be smart. You just have to do the work. I mean, kids, if they turn in a piece of paper with their name on it, they're gonna get partial credit for something if they just do the work. And if they look at it that way of, oh, I just have to do this, instead of, oh, I have to prescribe to be this wonderful, amazing intellectual, maybe there might be some more people for this, so.
You mentioned Common Core. What are your thoughts on that? And what direction should the school district know or should it have?
Well, the Common Core, I know it's just standards. But a lot of the problems that I see with it are in, it seems to be a lowering of standards for everyone. So that, so that American students are no longer exceptional, that they're just like everyone else. And I think that American students, it's okay for us to be exceptional. The world needs people to be exceptional to lead the world. And they are, I've spoken to mothers who have taken advanced degrees in math that cannot help their fourth grade kid with math because they don't do 7 times 8 is 56. They do some other kind of breakdown of 8 is to 10 or some, I'm not even sure exactly how it goes, but they're not memorizing multiplication tables anymore. And the books that go along with Common Core is Journeys. I mean, I Googled piloting journeys. I thought that that was the name of it. But no, that's the term, or we're piloting journeys this year. And it's, it goes right along with the Common Core. And so everybody wants to get that book because then they can just teach right along with it and it goes along. But then that means everybody's learning the exact same thing, which can be a good thing. But if those word problems are set up with a certain philosophical bent to them or sociological bent to them, it is kind of an indoctrination. And I've heard that in history books, there's fake history in there where it's just been rewritten. Because, you know, history is written by the people who do the textbooks. And if everyone's using the same textbooks, then history's lost. And if, especially in elementary schools, if those teachers have not had degrees in history, they might not know the difference. So, these are issues I see with Common Core.
Let me ask a question about smelling wood. What are, and I'll start with Kathy. What's your view on the $4,000 shower that was recently installed over the administration?
Well, I was surprised, disappointed. And I, I have made that perfectly clear to my boardmates and superintendent. I think it was a bad decision. And even though it wasn't a decision that needed board approval, I think it might have been, I mean, in hindsight, it's easy to say it might have been wise to ask. But I would prefer that the question hadn't even come up. That it wasn't an idea that was pursued in any way. But I, I mean, I do understand that people in the community feel differently. There's a wide spectrum of opinions. And I understand that. But just speaking for myself, it's not something that I would have supported. Even though I support wellness for everyone and I want all of us to have opportunities to be effective in our jobs, I just don't think it's necessary to have an additional facility.
Lisa, what's your view?
Well, first of all, the justification of that he would claim mileage to run home and take a shower. I was discussing with my other CPA friends and that's really commuting miles and not deductible. So I hate, so if people are claiming miles to run home and take a shower, then maybe we need to look at that. It's, I think, the overall attitude toward budgeting, that they budget to capacity, which is the most money that they think they could get from all sources. And that way, they don't ever have to come back and ask for any additional monies. And it seems to me that it would be better to build from the ground up instead of just filling in the rest of it to capacity. And then you would have to discuss a program or discuss an issue and have what its costs and what you think that the benefits would be from those, from that program. So, and I wanna make sure that, as I said before, that it's not indicative of an attitude towards spending that is not focused where it needs to be. And $4,000 is just $4,000. And somebody did give $4,000 to cover the cost of it. But if he'd have given that $4,000 and there wasn't a shower, then we could have done a lot more with it in reverse place. So, it just seems silly.
Let me ask another question. Everybody talks about doing things in the school system for the kids. It's the primary goal. It's what it's all about. It's why everybody's there. But when you look at what the, what teachers are asking for, and some folks might argue that you can't separate these two issues out, I think it seems to some people in the community that it feels like when you're looking at the distribution of money in a school district or in a state, I understand that some money comes from the state as well, the federal government as well, that when you're looking at the percentages of how that money splits out, that it appears that more of the emphasis is going toward making sure that the teachers have a salary that they're happy with, benefits that they're happy with, a pension that they're happy with. And that that becomes potentially a drain on the money that can go directly to the students. Again, I'll start with you. What's your view?
Well, first I'll say that Vancouver, I think, is unique and stands out in the region and in the state for the relationship that we do have with our teachers. We have a true partnership. And I don't think that their first interest is, on the whole, is their, is their salary and their benefits. I think their first interest is being excellent at what they do and demonstrating, you know, the ability to move a student from A to B and by the school year to show significant growth. I think the system is driven by the desire to honestly prepare kids for their lives. And everything that we do is about creating the optimum system to make that happen. So we, we have to have teachers that feel valued, that we can demonstrate that we value them with fair compensation and who feel that they are empowered to be instructional leaders. They're, they're the closest contact we have with our primary customer, which is children. So, for me, if I, if I hear it from a teacher, that's, that means a lot to me. It means, it means a lot more to me than if I hear it from something else, somewhere else in the system. If, if teachers are feeling valued, if they feel that they can innovate, if they feel that they can be held accountable because they have the ability to ask for what they need and receive it, that's a win-win for us. So I think that our teachers are in it for the right reason. I think they love Vancouver Public Schools. We retain teachers at a very high rate, even new teachers. Every year when we hire teachers, we have hundreds of people coming to us, a lot of them from Portland. And they're very grateful to be in our district. And we're, as long as they're exceptional, we're happy to have them. And I'm confident that they are. So, I understand nationally, there's a different way of looking at some of these things. But for Vancouver Public Schools, I believe we have the right people. We give them the right tools, including compensation. And they perform to the standards that I, I'm happy with.
Did you mention the local tax dollars that also goes to schools? Because our levy dollars is more than the federal government dollars, just a little bit more that we pay. And a lot of that does go to increased salaries. But I don't doubt the motives of our teachers. And I, from what research I've done, little salary differences between districts are not motivators for teachers to change districts. That salary is not a big motivator for teachers. We have to be careful with public sector unions in general. And so, plus watch on union contract would be helpful. But I don't doubt the motivation of teachers.
Right. And I didn't, I don't think I brought up the word motive, but that really wasn't the point. The point was looking at where the distribution of money is going to the teachers versus to the school, to the, to the kids. Is that a fair, is there a fair distribution there that is basically saying, yeah, that seems to be in the right balance? Or is too much money going to the teachers and not enough directly to the kids? That was a real question. I don't doubt motivation. Most teachers are in it for the right reason. But it's the money being distributed properly. And I guess both of your answers to that are yes.
Well, it's a, it's a labor-heavy industry.
Right. I don't mean that that's 50/50. But I mean, however that distribution should come out, both of you feel like the answer to that is it's appropriately balanced based on all the circumstances?
Well, I've been tapping up into the details to give you an accurate answer to that because I've only seen a high level summary of the budget.
I would say it's appropriately balanced. However, because we are still in the situation of being underfunded, I mean, this was our very first year. In all the years that my children have been in school, and I have a daughter who's a senior now, this was the first year that we have a budget that's on the plus side as opposed to a deficit. So I would say because of the state legislature's decision-making, our students are not receiving the right amount of funding. And the state knows this. And all of their own data says that we're being underfunded. So I would say, no, the students are not getting the appropriate amount of money. The state has set a dollar figure. The Supreme Court set a dollar figure of $12,000 per student that the state needs to be responsible for by 2018. And as of this year, we're at 7,200. So, we're, we're below where we need to be.
And along those lines, if the legislature does commit to compliance with the clearing decision, where should that money go? Start with Lisa. There's more money comes from the state into the schools. How should the schools spend it?
You see, that's the question. I mean, you say you need to spend it on the students. And if you're not spending it on the teachers, I guess you could be upgrading facilities. But then there's a point where you can't, there's only so much that they can be upgraded. I would think that arts could be expanded quite a bit because that had to be cut out and cut back a bit over the years. Other things that have been cut back, I would hate to see it go to another layer of administration. I would like to see it go to programs that maybe, dare I say charter schools, that things that give kids more opportunities. The more opportunities that they have, the more opportunities they have to be successful. So, and especially in the arts, I was just doing a survey and I was thinking that, that that's a way to really engage students who you might not be able to reach any other way, so.
Well, is the, is the teacher-student ratio where it needs to be?
Right. And I'll answer that one. And then I'd love to have an answer to that one.
Okay. I'll answer, I'll answer.
Oh, okay. So, when the state appropriately funds schools according to the Supreme Court decision, when we get to that place, we will finally be at a point where the local levy will not have to be at 18%, which is where it is now. So all that's happening now is the state decided to cope with whatever issues they felt they had. They took the state obligation and put it on local taxpayers. So when they meet their obligation, that means local taxpayers won't be paying what they pay in property taxes for schools and then on top of it, paying 18% in the local levy. So that's the first thing that'll happen. And that would be a wonderful thing for our voters. Now, our voters could decide, we want our levy dollars to remain at whatever percent or a lower percent and actually function like they were supposed to. So levies were supposed to be for, for special things, for enhancements, for creating a world-class education system through these models that the community agrees on and is willing to pay for. And instead, it became a way to backfill all the underfunding. The teacher salaries that aren't paid by the state, the transportation costs that aren't paid by the state. The, you know, there's a list, unfortunately. So that would be the first and most important thing, is that the levy rate could probably come down. And that would be where we lead to taxpayers.
Student-teacher ratio, where it needs to be here?
Yeah. I think it's where it needs to be based on the experts, our teachers and our, I mean, I would say our teachers. We're, we're well below the contracted agreements that we have with our teachers' union. I don't mean well below, like six students below, but we're, we're under the cap. And I think that...
Do you know what it is now?
It's by grade band. So, for example, in kindergarten, it would be probably the cap was something like 23 to 1 teachers or something. You know. We're, we're under the cap. I don't, I don't know that it's the optimum place, but it's, it's the place where we are right now.
Do you have any view on student-teacher ratio?
Well, I mean, it would always be better to, to lower it. And they keep up with, what is the ratio they call it now? They don't call it student-teacher ratio. They call it, it's, it's not classroom size. It's more like how many students do we have versus how many teachers we have versus what each classroom size is.
Right. I mean, sometimes they call teachers FTE. Whole-time equivalent, but...
Right. Yeah. But, so the terminology can be misleading on what the student-teacher ratio is. But I do know that, that the schools in the budget this year cut back on the 11th and 12th grade teachers. And I'm not sure why. Like, there was a pretty good decrease, a 10% decrease in 11th and 12th grade teachers. And I wasn't sure why.
Yeah. I don't, I mean, I've never heard anything like that, so I'm not sure.
Yeah. I was digging in the numbers and it just wasn't surprising.
We just, you know, I mean, through retirements and then we hired 100 teachers this year.
Let's talk a little bit about internet teaching. There seems to be a movement nationally that it's becoming more prevalent. It certainly is by no means what everybody's doing today. But there appears to be a movement in the direction of trying to teach more through the internet. Theoretically, not even needing a school building anymore, but teaching students through, through the internet. Views on that, Kathy?
The way that I would describe one portion of this model, it's called a flipped classroom. So students go home and they watch lecture or a teacher running through problems, things that they might normally see in class. And then when they come into class, it's actually working one-on-one or in small groups with the instructional leader to demonstrate that they can do these skills, to practice, to talk about things. And I think that's, that sounds very good to me. And I think that's, that sounds very good to me. More time for communicating with peers, communicating with your teacher, you know, expanding the lesson beyond just being able to, you know, do the problem or answer the problems. I think that sounds good to me. We are expanding our opportunities for this blended learning, like at Lewis and Clark High School, where the students all have their one-to-one, you know, electronic device, laptops, you know, iPads and things that are issued by the district. So that some of the work can be done 24/7 on their own time when they can access it. And then they come to interact with the instructional leader as a guide, not necessarily as someone that they listen to with the lecture. So I think that's good. My own students have taken online math courses and they're happy with them. They were able to do, you know, a year-long geometry course over the summer and felt a lot of satisfaction that they got to set their own pace, they demonstrated their knowledge, they even, when they came back to school, passed a test that the teachers had given them just to confirm that this course taken in federal way was appropriate for them and that they could demonstrate their knowledge. So I think for a lot of kids, it's a good thing. I think students don't need, they have access to so much information now, they don't really need someone giving them information. They need people helping them learn to analyze information, how to weigh information, and how to make decisions with, you know, what they can gather on their own. So I think it's a, I think it's a good thing. I think if it keeps kids engaged, that's, that's the whole ballgame.
Before I ask, can you answer that question, Lisa? Theoretically, do you think that that kind of a program could reduce overhead? In other words, you know, in theory, this kind of lesson, whatever the lesson is, you spoke of math, a teacher could teach 1,000 students or 10,000 students. And even if there is a need to bring them back into this one-on-one system, that would appear that we're looking at total hours spent, that that potentially could reduce overhead. Do you see that as a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, at some grade levels and for some subjects and for some learners, I think that would really work.
What's your view on that?
Well, I am biased because my county grade and my MBA were both online, competency-based online. And I think that that's a real big opportunity for kids who really want to achieve is online classes, just let them fly. You know, let them take as many as they want to, have the credit limit, the students for those overachievers, they really can accomplish a lot. Once they know it, they move on. I mean, I did that in fourth grade and it was kind of fun. And then you go into fifth grade at a different school and oh, they're in fifth grade again. But I'm all for options for different students that want them. It also can expand options if you don't have, say, a French teacher at your school that could learn French that way. It really does. What I don't understand is why, if there's this English class and you have an online course for it, then it's an online course for that English class. It seems like each district doesn't have to make up their own online course for an English class. It's right there. And that's the beauty of the online course. My personal university, they've had mentors that you spoke to every week to make sure that you were keeping up and that a teacher would be more like a mentor in that type of situation. But I am all for opportunities for kids and ways to keep them engaged in online learning. That's another thing.
What's happening with the ESD and the relationship with that institution? Are you satisfied with how it's working for the district? Have any changes in that relationship for good in the last few years?
Well, I know that the district thinks very highly of Dr. Tyler Barnes. And we have, I don't think it's understating to say it's an awesome relationship with the ESD. You know, when we were in the throes of all the budget cuts, people just had to come together. If you had any turf concerns before, you needed to let those go. And I saw districts doing that and just facilitating partnerships, asking how we can all work together. So I think the ESD has been and is and will continue to be an awesome partner for the district. We rely on them for a lot of our data warehouses and some other things. But, you know, teacher training, they help us with evaluating students, you know, with special needs and different things like that. So I think, I think they're invaluable. And I know sometimes the state has looked at the ESDs as a cost center instead of, you know, something that they could cut. But I know we've always pushed back very hard on that, they're valuable partners.
Thoughts from accounting standpoint or other ones?
From accounting standpoint, again, I gotta dig into the details before moving on that. And she's telling me that I can get them. Because I only have summaries in PDF form, I mean Excel spreadsheets. But there's probably opportunities there.
What about, you're from the South.
Yes.
What part of the South?
Alabama, West Virginia, Alabama.
I know in Florida, the school districts really are the county boundary lines. So that, I lived in Lee County, but, oh, I was robbing you of my property. But instead of having close to a dozen school districts, Lee County, which is probably a little bigger than Clark County here, had one school district. And all of the counties in Florida just had one school district per county. Logic, maybe logic doesn't hold up, but logic would tell you that rather than having 11 or 12 administrations running around the county dealing with 11 or 12 school districts, that maybe one, is it 10?
10 county Woodlands, we covered Woodlands there.
10 county school districts. You would have one, and that would seem to be a large cost saver. Not completely, you wouldn't just throw out nine school district administration budgets. Obviously, you would have to raise some prices someplace. But that, it seems to me that there's some logic in cost savings that you wouldn't have so many school districts per county. Good thoughts, Kathy?
Well, we talked about this four years ago, and I remember at the time saying that the perception or the expectation that there would be savings hasn't, it's not a fait accompli, it's not a given, that if you take Evergreen and Vancouver and combine them, that you would have enormous cost savings. First of all, the system would get a lot more complex if the larger school districts had been Seattle. And at least on the Vancouver side and for a portion of the Evergreen side, we have a fair amount of poverty, you know, more than 52% of our students are in poverty. And that presents a lot of opportunities for extra interventions, which cost a lot of money. Students in poverty need a lot more attention, one-on-one, more learning support.
But whatever school district those kids are in, are they getting that ensemble now?
Yeah, they are, they are. But I think just like there's value in having the Oregonia just across the river and the Columbian on this side.
There is no doubt.
You know, we could say, let's have one mega paper and just do a Clark County edition or something. But I think there's value in having units that are responsible to small, not a small community, but I think, I'm happy with the way things are as a parent and as a taxpayer. And I think if any district wants to join our district, we'll take their resume and see if we want to bring them on board. But I bet we would want to stay where we are.
Lisa, your view on that?
Well, part of what makes this country great is the local control of the school boards because you have communities that can decide on curriculum. And a lot of things, the school year, how many two-hour early releases you have, all kinds of wonderful things that the local school board gets to decide and are accountable to the voters and the people there in their community. So I could see where there might, could be looked at from a cost standpoint, to see if it could save some money, but you also lose a lot. It's really like Clark coming forward. And I don't think that the citizens would like that.
Transportation is a significant cost to the district. What's your view, let's start with Kathy, on the taxpayers' obligation versus a parent's obligation to get kids to school?
Well, from just purely a safety point of view, I would rather have students on the bus than, you know, we just took Roosevelt Elementary, it's 800 students approximately. I'd rather have, you know, 10 school buses than 800 cars for lots of reasons. I think it's, I have no problem busing kids to school, you know. Sadly, the state doesn't compensate the districts at 100% for what we know it costs per diesel and a driver and a bus. So the district has made, I think, good, reasonable decisions about creating walking school bus zones around certain schools, so there's no buses involved, and maximizing routes. They've become very good at kind of like UPS-eliminated left turns. The district has done a lot with reimagining the routes and making sure that they're the most efficient they can be. But I think it's a good option for parents, you know. We have a lot of parents who are working nonstop just to keep the family afloat and adding transportation responsibilities onto their plate with the variety of start times that we have and student interest for staying after school, which we want them to do. I think it would be a burden personally. So I like the one that we have. If you choose to drive your child to school, you can. And if you can't, there's a bus.
Lisa?
That's what we need to do. We gotta do what we can to get our kids to school. Parents do have some responsibility, but school bus, that's part of, again, part of what we are. I guess we could rethink that at some point. But I don't know how we would.
Well, right now, state law requires us to bus any student outside of one mile. So we'd have to change the state law, I suppose, initially of that.
Lisa, with an accounting background, obviously that would be beneficial in this position. What kind of skills would you need to develop and work on to be an effective school board?
Well, I would definitely have to learn about, more about the programs that Kathy has been describing here, spend some time researching those. My focus has been on other things in the past couple of years. But I, when I focus on something, I can really get inside of it, like get in the data and look around and see what opportunities are there. But really, the school board is for providing the vision and the strategy. And right now, the mission of the Vancouver School Board is to provide, to bring competent students. And I think that we should change that mission to somehow make it successful students in whatever way that shows for each student. If we aim for competence, we're going to hit subpar. But maybe if we aim for success, we might get competence.
You know, when all is said and done, this is a competition for a seat. And with that in mind, I'll start with you, Lisa. Why would you be a better choice than Kathy to be in this seat?
You know, I was just thinking as we were sitting here that if Congress could sit here and have conversations at the table like Kathy and I are doing with others, wouldn't it be a much better place? Because we are having a very simple discussion between two people who have the best interests of students at heart and who want to give back to the community. So I'm not going to, I'm not gonna.
That's a pretty tough spot for a challenger to be in. And you don't, you can't offer why you'd be voting for it, but okay.
Well, no, well, okay. Well, I would be good, well, my accounting background, I can dig into the numbers. I mean, I really am strong in that way. I'm a problem solver. I.
Okay. Kathy, your shot at this answer, why would you be a better school board member than Lisa?
Well, just like four years ago, I think my strengths are a really intimate relationship with students and staff. It's really been my passion since my children started school to support teachers, to understand how I can make public education all that I would hope that it would be for every child. And so I've just been growing that over the last four years. But I guess what I've added is this next level of experience of working with four other board members to try and look beyond what I want either for my children or my school and really trying to affect change for all, you know, nearly 23,000 students that we have. So at this point, four years into it, I've established, you know, kind of the next order of relationships with my board members, I guess, an expanded set of relationships in central office with some really great people. I think I've gained their trust at this point. You know, when I came in, I was a parent, and sometimes that is a bit of a concern sometimes for central office types. You know, what's her agenda, what's she really after? And I think I've demonstrated that what I'm after is success for each child and a commitment to students that goes beyond sort of the cliches, we're all here for kids, you know. Can we really demonstrate that through how we allocate resources, what our priorities are, what, you know, what we're willing to do to have kids be successful? So I think my strengths are what they've always been on the one hand, involvement with parents and families and staff, but then bringing on the four years of being on the board and having a chance to learn a lot about oversight of the district and advocate for kids.
Anything else?
Just if any, you have any, we haven't covered anything, or if there's something that you'd like to say in closing, Lisa?
When I first started running for school board, I was, I talked about, you know, principle, freedom, management flexibility, and getting inside the numbers and transparency, and also expanding student choices. But as I dug into the numbers and discovered the discrepancy of the North and South, I really, I found out why I was really running. I know that seems silly, but it is to help bring that focus there because I think the overachievers, I don't know if I've ever said this already, but the overachievers are going to achieve because they're overachievers. And 55% of Hispanic girls in the inner city of Vancouver, in Vancouver School District, will be pregnant by the time they're 17 years old. This was buried in the Cape Report on page 82 of 84 where they had, they changed the format of the whole report and hid the graph down here because the non-Hispanic was like a little tiny percentage on the graph, but Hispanic was 55%. And that cycle of poverty, once they start having children that young, is, it's going to continue. And we've got to do what we, if we could just make it where it was 16 to 18 instead of 15 to 17. And I don't know how we would address that in the school district, but a lot of times you've got to shine lights in corners so that people know that things are going on and not hide it in page 82 of 84. They always bear the lead. Don't they, when we find that out? That's why you have to go to the end of the reports. But. So definitely find that out, that's why you have to go to the end of the reports, but, I really am eager for this opportunity to just, to jump in and see what I can help provide with my life experience and, and, you know, I also have a degree in philosophy, by the way, that's my other degree, we need to do that.
I just wanted to talk for a second about the Common Core, which I'm, I'm actually pretty excited about. I think there are some open-ended questions, but, you know, it was in two thousand nine that Washington first started looking at the Common Core, and we've been, um, as a state, uh, very excited about the more rigorous standards. The legislature adopted it in two thousand eleven, and we're actually piloting some of it right now with more implementation coming next year. And Washington's also been a leader in the assessment that'll go with that, the smarter, you know, balanced assessment that'll go with the core, the Common Core standards, and, um, I agree there are some questions about it, but, you know, the, the good news is that Washington State, in terms of our standards, is very much in sync with the Common Core. There are other states that, in order to be more successful with the no-child left behind, actually lowered their standards so that they would look better, and Washington maintained and enhanced their standards. So when Washington looked at the Common Core standards and our own standards, there was a lot of, um, matching up, which gave us a lot of hope that we could make the standards more rigorous for the benefit of our, of our students. And I certainly, uh, agree with the notion that, uh, a student in Seattle should match up, I believe, comparably with a student in Chicago. An A in human, in AP literature, or any kind of class in Seattle really should be the same thing in Chicago, otherwise, um, our children really aren't going to be able to compete. You know, my students are, my student is applying for college now, and it's really brought home to me this idea that the rigor in the classrooms and the, um, intensity with which we pursue public education has got to be at a higher level, because when they go compete, no one, no one cares that you came from a less affluent high school, you don't get points for that, you might get some kind of, um, need-based scholarship for that, but you don't get admitted because you did pretty well at a, at a not-so-great school. So, it's just reinforced for me, going through that process with my daughter, you know, when we talk about additional state money, it's got to go to learning support, it's got to go to intervention for kids so that everybody's leaving the system at a higher place so they actually have a chance to be great. I mean, that, you know, I mean, I just, that's all I think about these days, is how do we do the interventions earlier, you know? We're, we're intervening with kids now, birth to five, we just forget five, age five, kindergarten, we're, we're looking at them, birth to five, and the district has this whole awesome initiative, um, to reach out to parents right when they have their babies, to start, um, bringing kids where they need to be, so that when they get to kindergarten, they're really ready to do well and graduate on time. I mean, at third grade, we know who's, who's going to be in danger of graduating, and at sixth grade, we know who's going to be in danger, and at ninth grade, we know. So there are indicators throughout the system, and those are the, some of the things that I worry about the most, you know, but I think we're fighting the good fight, and I'm happy to be where I am, and, you know, hoping to continue.
Well, thank you very much for your time, for coming here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It's nice speaking with you.